Thank you.
Thank you. Just hang on just a couple more seconds.
Sure. Yeah, I can read that one. That's this one. This is four copies, one for each other.
Which way you want to do it?
Okay.
Once again, I'd like to welcome each and every one of you that are here. We're glad to see the attendance has increased. We like it. Now. Setting of the agenda. Anyone have any items to add to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve? Is that second? Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Next is our citizen public comment period. Ace has got it. Okay. Just as a reminder, this time is provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to the citizen. No individual citizen shall be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. All right, and as you come forward, please state your name and record. For our records, name and address. Uh, Mrs. Hicks. Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening. What I'd like to speak about this afternoon is one budget-related, so I'm not sure if now is the appropriate time or not, but if you allow me to wait, I would be more than happy to do so.
I think it's all right.
Okay. My name is Janet Hicks. I reside at 6334 Hollywood Road, Appomattox, Virginia. I'm the Circuit Court Clerk. Good evening. I stand before you to address the matter that was on last month's agenda for which no motion was made or vote taken on the matter. I viewed the YouTube video of this meeting and could see that there was some confusion about this matter for which I would like to clarify. I do not want the public to think that I am a money-hungry individual who is always appearing before this board asking for additional funding. I will admit that I've had to appear before this board more times in the last year than I have in the thirteen years serving as clerk. I only appear on behalf of my staff to see that they are treated fairly and the same as other county employees. I would also like to correct a statement made by Mr. Hogan. This would not be the fourth raise for my staff since last June. I have only approached this board on one occasion, asking to have funding that was removed from my budget be replaced. Otherwise, I have made a request to move funding already appropriate in my budget to other positions as they were vacated. This was done due to a retirement in 2019, resignation of employee in 2021, and again this year. Whenever the legislature grants a percentage increase in salaries for government employees, my staff receives this increase. As a result of my office not signing the MOU, my staff only receives the percentage increase on the state-paid portion of their salary. If the board grants a percentage increase, I understand that my staff will not receive the additional funding. Along with less fleet appeared before this board in February and March requesting that our staff receive the same $1,000 bonus that other county employees would receive. A bonus is not a raise. I would also like to clarify another statement made by a board member, which I think is the same individual, that constitutional officers need to pick whether they choose to go with the state or with the county. Elected local officials have no choice but to follow in the county payroll and benefits. We're elected by the citizens of this county, and we serve the citizens of this county. We are sworn to obey the laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia, but we ultimately answer to each voter of Appomattox County. There are four people that work in my office, myself along with three deputy clerks. All of our salaries are paid by the state. The county issues us a paycheck and is compensated by the state for the positions in my office. The county does, however, provide a supplement to our salaries. I would like to quickly recap why I have appeared before this board regarding my county supplement. In April 2021, I had employee vacate a deputy clerk position. This position did not get filled until July 15, 2021. In July 2021, as a result of legislation passed enriching my staff's salaries increase, the legislature realized that there was indifference in the starting salaries of deputy clerks in the general district, J and D R Court, and circuit courts. The legislature granted funding to the state compensation board to increase all salaries of deputy clerks in circuit courts to match the starting salary of the deputy clerks in the lower courts. The starting salary became $32,193. In providing this increase, the legislature did not take into consideration the employee's years of service. In other words, a new person starting made the same salary as an employee working ten, fifteen, or however many years. That is where I relied on the county supplement to thankfully help me out of this jam. Little did I know that as a result of having a vacant position at the end of fiscal year 2021, I lost this supplement to the position, which was returned to the general fund. That is why I appeared before this board in August of 2021 to request that this funding be restored back to my budget. The board graciously gave me a total of $14,221, and I was told to divide it among my staffing as I saw fit. I utilized this funding to have my fifteen-year and nine-year employee have a higher salary than the new position recently hired. Unfortunately, I suffered another loss this year. A ten-year employee resigned to accept another position. My request before the board last month was to ask that $4,457, which was a part of the funding approved by the board in August of 2021, be re-appropriated amongst the positions that I have. Please keep in mind, I'm not requesting additional funding. I'm only requesting that the funding already approved and placed in my budget be moved around. I recently made a four-year request of salaries of staffing on the control of the county administrator. In my request, I asked to see these salaries for the past four years. The county started using a new payroll system in 2020 for which an employee's salary can be followed through the years. It appears that as of 2022, there are approximately forty salary positions under Mrs. Adams' authority, and the average salary of these positions is $40,937.93. It appears that the majority of these employees receive a raise each year. Please understand, I'm not here to say that these employees are overpaid or do not deserve what they are earning. I'm simply here to point out that the Office of Controls of Budget has staffing that has a higher average salary, and the staffing on this payroll has also received yearly increases. The average salary of my deputy clerks is $35,774.66. This averages this to $17.04 hourly, with my lowest-paid employee making $15.48 per hour. Also reached out to other clerks' offices that are neighbors or similar in size to Appomattox County to see what their average deputy clerk salary is. I did not hear back from all clerks, and I ran out of time to follow up on this request. The average salary for Charlotte County is $36,096. Lunenburg County is $37,000. Lynchburg City, $37,742. And Buckingham County is $43,149. I respectfully request that the $4,457 already appropriated and in my budget be allowed to be re-appropriated amongst my staff for the remainder of this budget year, and that this funding remain in place for the upcoming budget year. If this is not acceptable to the board, I hereby request that the $4,457 be allowed to be moved to supplies or some other line item and remain in my budget. I thank you for your time and your consideration of this matter, and appreciate you addressing this matter tonight. Regardless of your stance on this matter, along with my staff, we'll continue to assist and serve the citizens of this county as we answer them. I am open to any questions that any of you may have.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Hicks, for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have a resolution in honor of officers involved in the March 28th, 2022 incident at Appomattox County High School. And I'd like to have the board come up front so we can each one congratulate these officers.
Call their names. Call their names.
Yeah. What?
Call their names.
We can have Deputy Brizantine, Deputy Gunnar, Investigator Woody, and Major Richardson come forward, please. The chairman's asked if I would read this. I'm gonna try. Calling, I don't know what else I'm gonna go on, but. Resolution in honor of officers involved in the March 28th, 2022 incident at Appomattox County High School. Whereas on March 28th, 2022, Deputy's Appomattox County Sheriff's Office acting on information received from a concerned student, attempted to approach a suspicious vehicle in the Appomattox County High School parking lot, approaching two o'clock in the afternoon. And whereas the vehicle, 2007 Hyundai, was occupied by two individuals. And whereas the driver of the Hyundai refused to communicate with officers in the immediate way ever seen, pursued by deputies of the Virginia State Police troopers for approximately twenty miles, before the driver lost control of the Hyundai and wrecked on Five Four Road in Chris Edward County in his pursuit. Whereas the occupants of the Hyundai were arrested on seven felony charges and three misdemeanor charges between them, including possession of a firearm on school property and threatening a person on school grounds. And whereas after obtaining a search warrant for the Hyundai, deputies recovered a nine-millimeter handgun, reported as stolen from Amelia County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors and the Appomattox County Sheriff's Office, with the events noted above, hereby officially recognize Investigator Chip Woody, Deputy Daniel Gunnar, Deputy Rodney Brizantine, and Major Rodney Richardson for having fearlessly intervened in a difficult situation and arrested two potential assailants, all without injury to others. Be it further resolved that the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors and Sheriff's Office, we hereby recognize and thank the Appomattox County High School community and the Virginia State Police for their valuable assistance in this case. Adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Appomattox County on the sixteenth day of May, 2022, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Motion to do, the mayor is our second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Chip Woody. Congratulations. There be more of these guys. Congratulations. Daniel Gunnar. Congratulations. And Deputy Rodney Brizantine. Congratulations, sir. And last but not least, Major Richardson. Congratulations, sir. On behalf of the board, we thank you. Thank you for, as Mr. Hogan read, that, for your services, for your heroism. Really. At this day and time, I've always told everybody, if you couldn't put a uniform on me, you'd give me a million dollars a day. No, sir. We appreciate you, our community and our county. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have Mrs. Melissa Lucy, CEO, Horizon Behavior Health. Is she in attendance?
I don't see her.
Noah Starkey? Okay. We'll move on. It's past our public hearings. Two action items, okay? Resolution for personal property tax relief program. In accordance with the requirements set forth in the Code of Virginia for the Personal Property Tax Relief Program, qualifying vehicles situated with the county commencing January the first, 2012, shall receive personal property tax relief. The 2022 PPTR rate is 23.40% for personal use vehicles valued at $1,000 to $20,000. Floor is open for discussion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution that's been provided. Reference to the Personal Property Tax Relief Program.
Motion to do, the mayor is our second.
Second.
Discussion? We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hicks? Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Next is a special event request, Evergreen Lavender Festival. Attached for the board's review is a special event permit application from Ken and Bonnie Swanson for Evergreen Lavender Festival to be held on June 18th, 2022, at the Evergreen Lavender Farm located at 7169 Old Evergreen Road in Appomattox, Virginia. This is a community event featuring music, food, and craft vendor, which will start 11:00 a.m. and end at 5:00 p.m. There will be food and alcohol available for purchases. Admission fee is $10 per person. This is a rain or shine event. No plan for cancellation. The sheriff, public safety director, building inspectors, zone administrator, and county administrator have received the application for compliance with local regulations and have added comments where necessary. Floor is open for discussion on this special event request.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hinkle?
The Evergreen Farm has always been good neighbors to those around him and support our community in many ways. I move to approve the event.
Very well. Is that second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I keep looking at the back at the clock, make sure I don't run over for a seven o'clock public hearing. Next is school appropriation request. Attached for the board's review and approvals is appropriation request from the schools for school nutrition funds in amount of $39,155.15 from USDA Supply Chain Assistant Funding. No new, no new local funds are requested. Is that a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Discussion? We have a roll call vote. Mr. Hicks? Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Okay, resolution in honor of National Police Week. The board requested that staff prepare a resolution in honor of National Police Week, May 15th through the 21st, 2022, for the dedicated members of the Appomattox County Sheriff's Department and the Virginia State Police, who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty and for the valuable service provided to the citizens of Appomattox County.
Mr. Chairman, if I might read the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Resolution in honor of National Police Week, May 15th through 21st, 2022. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And whereas the same proclamation designated the week in which May 15th falls as Police Week. And whereas tens of thousands of law enforcement officers from around the world converge in Washington, DC each year to participate in a number of planned events, which honor those officers who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas the brave and dedicated members of the Appomattox County Sheriff's Office and the Virginia State Police daily risk their lives to keep our community safe. And whereas our local law enforcement personnel routinely apprehend criminals, serve warrants, patrol our roadways, respond to domestic disturbances, investigate crimes, battle illegal drugs, and conduct other dangerous, and conduct other dangerous police activities. And whereas our local law enforcement personnel also routinely provide assistance to other first responders, including our local fire departments, rescue squads, animal control officers, and neighboring police agencies. And whereas school resource officers provide law enforcement mentoring and counseling in each of the county's four public schools, while they and other members of the sheriff's office provide security at school events, including athletic contests. And whereas by the terms of the President Kennedy's proclamation, May 15th through 21st, 2022, is designated as National Police Week, a time to recognize and honor law enforcement personnel, particularly those who have died in the line of duty, including Sheriff David Thomas Robertson of the Appomattox County Sheriff's Office. Now therefore be it resolved that the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors does hereby officially recognize and honor the dedicated members of the Appomattox Sheriff's Office and the Virginia State Police, who daily work to keep the citizens of Appomattox County safe, especially those personnel who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Be it further resolved that the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors does hereby thank each local law enforcement officer for his or her valuable service to the citizens of Appomattox County by recognizing National Police Week this May 15th through 21st, 2022. Mr. Chairman, I would move that resolution.
Motion been made, is that second?
Mr. Chairman, a second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Just one comment, if I may. I wish we would have included the conservation of wildlife officers. Maybe for next year.
Very good. And congratulations again.
We need to vote?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Hicks? Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Okay. Next is a resolution in honor of National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April the 10th through the 16th, 2022. Whereas emergencies requiring police, fire, emergency medical services, and animal control can happen at any time, day or night. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, EMTs, and animal control officers is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our first responders and their ability to save lives and protect property are all dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who dial 911 to report an emergency. And whereas public safety telecommunications, also called dispatches, are the single vital link to our public safety personnel since they monitor police, fire, EMS, and animal control activities by radio, providing those in the field with valuable information and ensuring their safety. And whereas, Appomattox County E-911 dispatches have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals and suppression of fires, the treatment of patients, and the furthermost of the animal control program. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of his or her job, while managing a total of 41,975 inbound calls during calendar year 2021. I want to, I want to read that again. Forty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five inbound calls. Whereas, each year during the second week of April, telecommunications personnel in the public safety community are honored nationwide for their dedication and professionalism. Now therefore be it resolved, the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors does hereby officially recognize and honor the county's dedicated E-91 dispatches for their professionalism, diligence, and personal sacrifice. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors does hereby thank each dispatcher and does hereby recognize and honor. This is for the week of 10 through, April the 10th through the 16th, because we do this each and every day. Now adopted by the Board of Supervisors on this date, 16th of May, 2022. Is there a motion for this resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
Second.
Discussion? Like to also end this, gentlemen, that Mr. Winfield and Mr. John Van Oerheem are here, too.
I think so is.
And Leah, I see her back there. Yes. So motion been made, and second, roll call vote. Mr. Hicks? Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Thank you all. Thank you all very much. Okay, seven o'clock is after seven. So. Public hearing. First one is amendments to the administrative fees for county development, building, planning, zoning, and land disturbance. Is there anyone here that like, would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone here that, that is not in favor of this?
VDOT's first.
Yeah.
VDOT's first.
Yeah. Yeah, they here.
No, VDOT is first.
But not there, is that?
We've already done this one, so you can just, you've opened and closed your public hearing.
Hereby closes public hearing. Now, Ms. Abbott, you were saying, VDOT.
Robert Brown is here tonight.
Yes. All right, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
That public hearing, VDOT's six-year plan. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
I turned over too many.
Good afternoon, good evening, board. Our six-year plan each year seems like it gets a little bit smaller, but we're still making progress on some unpaid roads in the county. We are going to complete quite a, quite a stretch of unpaid road this year and with hard servicing, and that is the Route 605, Dreaming Creek Road, over in Stonewall area. That road has worked its way through the plan. It is, it is fully financed, and we do plan on constructing that road this calendar year and completing that project. That is the first, first priority in our proposed six-year plan. Second, you will see another road, Route 644 Hancock Road. That has worked its way through the, through the six-year plan. Our third priority is Cedar Bend Road, Route 675. That has also been on the books for a while. And following that is priority four, another section of Hancock Road, which is a one-point, 1.4 mile section. And then our last, our last project in the six-year plan is priority five, Route 709 Hawk Lane. That came as a request from a couple of years ago, I think. Those are the projects that we are financing in the six-year plan. We will need to be adding some more projects, maybe next year. We, we still have some out years in our six-year plan that we have not obligated or obligated our funding to, but that's, that's okay. They're in the last years. That's, it doesn't matter if they're not obligated right now or not. We'll, we'll increase our rural rustic priority list as we get requests, and we will obligate those funds maybe next year, next year. But it doesn't really affect anything for this year because really all we're proving is really the first year because our funding scenarios can change, and really what you're proving here is a six-year plan, but basically it is the first two or three years of our plan that, that out, the projects that only, that really get the, get the funding. If you look in your plan, you also see what we call countywide items for traffic services, engineering and survey, countywide right-of-way engineering, and drainage. These are items that we use to work on our existing, our secondary roads. If you remember, we had a request for guard rail on 727 a couple of years ago. This traffic services money funded that guard rail improvement. So it's a great, it's a great tool to have in our toolbox to address specific needs as they come up and not have to be planned out like our, like some of our construction projects are. So that is really all I have to present tonight. If you look at your cover sheet, you'll see If you look at your cover sheet, you'll see the monies that we get in 2020, 23. We are going to receive forty-seven thousand estimated funds, forty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars of tele-fees, and this is fees that are dedicated to secondary road construction that VDOT takes in from letting utility owners use our right-of-way. We collect fees from them. That money, some of that money is designated to secondary roads. And you'll see a second line on there, and that is specific unpaid road funding. It's our district grant unpaid road money. It has to be used for hard surfacing of unpaid roads. The tele-fees, that's not designated specifically for unpaid roads, but it can be used for unpaid roads, and we do use that. In fact, we moved to fund, to fund all of Dreaming Creek, to build that whole section of road at one time. We had to pull some of those tele-fees back out of our countywide items, some balances that we had, because we did not want to go over and build half of that road and leave the other half unpaved. We wanted to go over there once. I think it would provide a greater service to the folks that live over there, and we wanted to avoid that conflict. So, that is really all I have for you all tonight. I think you also have a unpaid road list, home, a rural rustic unpaid road list. The only road that's not in the plan is Elliot Lane. That was requested just recently. So, and that is the only road that's, does not have a priority, and I would ask the Board tonight to just put a, to put a, a priority five on that. So, next year, when we revise the plan, that road can be brought into the six-year plan. So, we'll have time to do the preliminary, the preliminary engineering work to get it in the system, in, in the budgeting system that we have. So, that is really my request tonight. I'll be glad to answer any questions from any Board member or any, or anyone in the audience.
Excuse me. Any questions? Any Board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
Thank you for coming. Just some refreshment memory, these, the list, does, does the paving go in order of the list? Or is it all of these are combined?
No.
And you do it to when you find, when it's, when it's appropriate to be done?
No, if you look at the, at the plan, each, each one of these projects has a priority. And that's kind of how the, how they were received from the, to the Board originally. And as you know, the Board sets priority, and we do not change that priority once, once the Board sets it.
Okay. So, so you would do, for, for instance, right now, the priority one is, is Dreaming Creek.
Yes.
And that's been on, that's been on the plan for a long time.
That's been a long time.
Thank you, all had a lot of maintenance issues on that road. I don't, I don't know, I can't remember that far back, but that road will be done before Hancock Road.
Yes.
Okay, so you go by the priority?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I had one there. Elliot Lane, you said that the, we put that around the next year.
Yeah, that will move into the, that will move into six-year plan next year. And yeah, it would be priority six if we're still carrying all these priorities. Hopefully, we get Dreaming Creek built, and we get it closed out financially, and it can come, it will not show up in the plan next year if we get it closed out financially. But we do not take projects out of the plan until they are closed out financially and no longer affect the funding scenarios.
Okay, any other questions?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, one last question. So, if, if the Board were so inclined to move priorities around, can we do that, or does that cause headaches for you guys?
It doesn't cause headaches for us, but it may cause headaches for the Board, because when you move priorities, your constituents, they, most of them have made their request, and you, Board sets priority, and I, I would not recommend doing that, but it's solely the Board's decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Okay.
Is there anyone here like to speak on the six-year plan? Mrs., Mrs., excuse me, Mrs. Johnson?
I think I'm gonna be worse than Bill, but, uh, pollen, but I'm gonna try to do this. As y'all know, I was up here last month to see you, and I'm getting to be a habit with you, but I kind of enjoy it, too, so.
Good.
You know, I come up a couple of years ago about 709 Hawk Lane. At that time, you all did ask the state to put it up, move it up if all possible. Well, that was two years ago, and now I see that we're still at the end of the six-year period. One reason I'm back up here, but last month, I asked for you all to deny the, the permit for the festival, which you did. You did an excellent job, and I appreciate it. But regardless, the festival went on, just as they had planned. They did not eliminate any portion of it. Music, vendors, everything that she had planned on doing on the permit went on. Over eight, well, from Thursday night till Sunday evening, we had one thousand six hundred and seventy vehicles up and down that road. And they planned to do this three and four times a year. That traffic created dust, as y'all can see. Now, I can't talk because of the dust. And I'm back again asking you to please, if I can't stop the festival, at least give me some relief with the dust going to it, because I think that's gonna be, regardless of what you all do, she doesn't care about the laws of the county or anything else, so that's going on. So, if you can, just help me with the road if I can't do anything else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like, like to run the comments? Okay. So hereby closes public hearing on the six-year plan. And we don't have to vote on that yet, do we?
You can come back to it.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Do you need a vote of?
Yeah, we need to, we need to approve this, and I would ask that you approve putting Elliot Lane as our next priority on our unpaid road list.
Okay. Is our motion then to approve Elliot Lane on the six-year plan?
On our unpaid.
Unpaid.
Road list.
Uh-huh.
Unpaid road list.
Unpaid road list.
Priority road list.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move Elliot Lane in priority five to the six-year plan.
Thank you, sir. Is that second? Second. Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. So, we could slot ones after Elliot Lane, didn't we?
We can.
Or is it too early for that?
No, we can, we can add anything you want to to this list right here, because these are projects that are waiting to go in the six-year plan. This is not part of the six-year plan, but it is a, a document that the Board approves to set priorities for roads that people have requested to become hard-surfaced roads. So, yes, sir, it is the Board's privilege to add any route to this that they want to and set priority.
If I may, I just had a very recent constituent request for Brandonwood Lane in my district, and I was looking at Elliot Lane on GIS here, and there's about five, seven dwellings on that. There's eleven on Brandonwood. It doesn't need to go before Elliot, but I'd, I'd like that considered, too. That's off wild.
Too late.
What, Mr. Hips, what route is that? Do you know the route number?
I saw the GIS on that. That's a private, that's a private.
Oh, that's a, that's a non-state maintained route. We can, we cannot, we cannot add that to that list because it's not state maintained.
You haven't adopted this yet.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and address the elephant in the room. Hawk Lane, you know, the other roads are in your district, and they've been on the list for a while. I know Dreaming Creek's got to be done. Hancock and Cedar Bend. I would just ask the other Board members if, if there's any interest in moving Hawk Lane up a couple of notches, so we can try to get that done sooner.
Well, I know it's been a lot of discussion about Hawk Lane, also a lot of discussion about unfavorable driving conditions on that road. And I don't have a problem with it. I think we ought to.
I'll just share a little light on it. We're in FY twenty-three, begins, begins July first of this, of this year. I don't, if we look at the projects that are fully funded, it appears that Hawk Lane would get funding July one of twenty-five, on our current funding scenario in our plan. That's just for y'all's information.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Henkel.
I'm not familiar with to, you know, when Hancock and Cedar Bend were put on there as to how many residents were bringing that forward or not, so I guess, having no background on that, I guess I have nothing to object if we want to move Hawk Lane up.
Okay. No comments on Hawk Lane?
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if, I'll make a motion then that if we could move Hawk Lane up to, right after Dreaming Creek.
Dreaming Creek is which priority?
That's priority one, and that would move Hawk Lane up to priority two.
Now, doing that, or you make that as a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion been made, is that second? Okay, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, oh, Mr. Brown, in moving Hawk Lane, that would put it whereabouts?
That will, should put it, that should put it, construction most likely next year. And, and when you get around to it, it's not gonna have a, it's not gonna have a big impact because even putting it, and this is, ease some, maybe ease some, some concerns, you know, the estimated cost for constructing that first mile and a half of Hancock Road is two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We can fully fund Hawk Lane and still have some of that current funding that was on, on Hancock to still stay there, even though it's, it may be priority three, it will not, it will not change the start construction date, because we, as long as that project has money on it, we can start it. We just have to have it paid off in, in, within two years. So, it's really not gonna affect the folks on Hancock Road getting that first section of hot surface. So, I don't know if that might ease your minds a little bit.
It does. Very good. Okay, gentlemen, after receiving public comments and discussion, is our motion then to now approve the DDOT's six-year plan and rural rustic priority list for twenty-three through twenty-eight?
The resolution.
Say a motion on the, on the resolution. Is that second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I bought some new statements. I'll leave them back there on the table, and I'd like to have one. Thank y'all.
Yes.
You had the public hearing.
Yeah, number six we did. Right. We're getting have Ps and Qs in order here. Okay, public hearing, conditional use permit, twenty-two oh, twenty-two six. Collins and Nana, I may pronounce that wrong, Nana O'Brien. Oh, on this, I'll read it like this, Collins and Nana O'Brien, Robert and Joan Morgan, property owner, have requested a conditional use permit to operate a scrap and salvage service business. The property is zone A1, agriculture zoning district, and the proposed use is a conditional use within the district. The property is located on the north side of Watt Abbot Road at ten ninety-one Watt Abbot Road, Apomattox, Virginia. The parcel contains one hundred and three point forty-two acres. However, approximately two acres will be part of the land use, while the remainder of the property will continue as farmland. The tax map identification number is thirty-eight. The property is designated as part of the Rural Preservation Area, RPA, and the Apomattox County Comprehensive Plan. The planning commission heard this petition on April thirteenth, 2022, and forwarded their recommendation for approval with conditions which will be designated in the attached Okay. And with this, you see seven, seven items that the planning commission installed to improve, that they approved on this conditional use permit. Is there anyone here to address this? Oh, yes. Excuse, Mr. Robert Morgan? You want to consult and talk about this?
I was kind of, I put a label on that there, but I was kind of gonna see what y'all said first and see if I need to say anything.
Oh.
You want Mr. Horton to address?
Mr. Roig? Okay.
Yeah, I'll just give you a brief overview. Planning Commission, as you stated, they voted four to one to recommend approval of this. This came in, this is kind of a success story in our county. They, Collins and Nana, they started out as a home occupation, and now they've grown to a point where they need to come forward and get a little bit more zoning approval. They're, they're branching out into, for lack of a better word, auto salvage part of it, and they might be able to explain that a little bit better, but it's just a, it's a product of their recycling business. They, they have to go through some DMV approvals, and for us to give those, to sign off on those DMV approvals, they have to get additional zoning approval. So, that, that's kind of how this comes about. Planning Commission did see. Uh, planning commission did see, uh, the need to put some conditions on it, i.e. the conditional use permit. And, uh, you've got those seven conditions. Uh, they, they, uh, submitted a concept plan, which is in your packet. Uh, they, they, number two, they limited the area for the CUP to, uh, just two acres. So two acres out of a hundred and three acre parcel. Uh, no portion of the scrap and salvage service land use will be stored, located, or positioned in front of the residence on the property. Uh, there's a residence that's about twelve hundred feet off of the road. Uh, so nothing will be in front of that residence. Uh, no portion of the, uh, of this will be at, at that twelve hundred feet. The scrap and salvage service land use area, the two acres, will be delineated by a screening, which will consist of any combination of existing trees, woods, fencing, or other materials suitable to shield the use from any adjoining property owner not under common ownership. Screening shall be a minimum of six feet. That's kind, that's worded a certain way because of the way the parcels layout here. Uh, Mr. Morgan actually owns two parcels. Uh, and, uh, the O'Briens own a, I think it's a five acre parcel, isn't it? A five acre parcel within the adjoining parcel. So Mr. Morgan owns everything around this for as far as I can see. Uh, so, uh, they, that was worded that way. Uh, if there is a part of this that can be seen by an adjoining property owner, they need to screen it. Uh, the hours of operation, uh, would be seven AM, seven PM, Monday through Saturday, no Sunday hours. Uh, number six and number seven were, uh, added at the planning commission meeting. Uh, the conditional use will expire immediately upon, if the property ownership for this parcel thirty-eight changes from either Mr. Morgan, Mrs. Morgan, Mr. O'Brien, or Mrs. O'Brien, or any combination of these four people. And number seven, uh, which was one of the ones that was more important, I think, to the planning commission, most important to them. Uh, the automotive vehicles that come in will remain intact, meaning in the same or similar condition upon which they will be shipped out. Uh, where they, when they arrive, as they were received at this location. Point being, there's not going to be stripped. So the cars will come in, they'll be there for a certain period of time, which I believe is roughly a week, week, ten days, and then they will be shipped out. Uh, it was explained to me, and this is a pretty good way of, uh, of explaining it, so it'll give, give you a better idea. It's like our convenience centers. You know, we, you know, I take my trash over to promised land to the convenience center and it stays there for a day or two until it goes to its final disposition at the landfill. So our convenience center is kind of the middle man in that situation. The O'Briens and, and what they're trying to do is kind of a middle man. They're not the final resting place for these vehicles. They're just a conduit to get them to that resting place. So, other than that, they're here, they're more than happy to come speak and answer any questions if you haven't. And no, Mr. Morgan's back there, will share anything about his property that you wanna know.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Morgan?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
And, and you may have answered it already because, uh, so, so if I'm looking at this, uh, this, this plat, uh, the site is on parcel number four. So you said Mr. Morgan owns all the way around it, so is he on number three?
He owns number three, yes.
Okay.
Let me get over to that plat just to make sure that we're talking the same language. Yes, and, and Mr. and Mrs. O'Brien own a five acre cutout within the boundaries of number three.
Okay.
That's roughly at the same, uh, if you just come right over from the, from the star there, if you just come right over, there's five acres cut out on that number three.
Okay, I see that on one of the maps, okay. The, uh, the only, only thing that I had a question about was, um, using the hay bales as fencing or as site screening, because hay bales can be moved. Um, but if you're the property owner and the only person who's gonna see it is you, then I don't, I don't know that that's a real concern, so. That was my only concern reading the application.
This is just FYI, you cannot see any of this from the outside. Can you take a look at your photos? Um, that's in your packet. Uh, I was, I was standing on the edge of the road, there's at least one photograph there. I'm standing on the edge of the road, you can see the house, but it's.
Rooming house.
Rooming house? That's just the Mizzou code.
It's like a boarding house.
A boarding house?
Kinda, kinda like a boarding house.
Okay, no cooking, none of that, or dining facilities, I'm about. That's the first time I've seen that, that's why I questioned it, what in the world? Any other questions? Concerns? And I said, a resolution has been prepared for our consideration. We need to adopt the resolution too. There's two things.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Henkel.
I move we adopt the resolution approving the permit with the, uh, dental, dental related, uh, instructions spelled out by the planning commission.
Motion made, is that second? Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Good luck.
Now, let's see. Boy, we have jumped the red here.
Yeah, you gotta adopt the.
Adopted what?
Number six.
Number six. Oh, yes. We had the public hearing, right? So the only thing we need to do is, is, uh, make a motion approve or disapprove. So what's?
It's three documents.
Uh-huh.
It's three documents.
It's three documents.
Can we adopt all three at one time? We got three votes.
That's what I, yeah. Is there a motion to adopt?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt.
Is that second?
Um, it's.
Discussion?
Item six, the first public hearing. And it's those three documents. And changing the code to align with it.
Discussion? Here and none is, after motion been made and second, all in favor, please signify, well.
Uh.
What motion made?
Motion made, I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
I thought Mr. Hips said. We better have a roll call vote on this. Mr. Hips? Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Henkel?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also thought that. Okay.
Number twelve.
Ten, eleven, twelve. Commissioner of Revenue refund request, Mrs. Sarah Henderson. Commissioner of Revenue is requesting the following to be paid from line item twelve oh nine dash fifty-eight oh three refund, refunds. Refund Nathan Meggerson, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents for twenty twenty-one rental estate taxes paid. He qualifies for the veteran's exemption. No local funds are required.
I'll move to, uh, do the refund to Mr. Meggerson.
Thank you, is that second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call vote, Mr. Hips? Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Henkel?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also thought that. Okay. Committee appointments. J. Robert Jameson Memorial Library Board of Trustees appointments. Before we go into further, is, you know, I, I left, who was it? Uh, Melissa Lucy wasn't here. Still nobody here to represent Horizon? Okay. Excuse me for that interruption, but we'll continue. J. Robert Jameson Memorial Library Board of Trustees appointments. Attached for the board's review is an email from Mrs. Diana Harvey, library director announcing that Mrs. Sharon Gold, Piney Mountain District, and Mrs. Becky Henderson, Courthouse District, will be retiring as representatives on the Kent only libraries board of trustees with terms ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Also, Ms. Cynthia Hall, Rec Island District has announced her resignation on the board due to a move over to her district with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The library board has provided candidates for two of the open positions. Mrs. Jorika Humbles, who resides at one oh five Humbles Farm Lane, which is in the Piney Mountain District, and Mrs. Jane Allen, who resides at two sixty Morton Lane, Courthouse District, who have shown interest in serving on the board and have agreed to put, excuse, to put their names up as candidates. Uh, you got, uh, somebody yet?
No, I need confirmation, so I defer to the next one.
Okay, very good. Now, Courthouse District, uh, that's my district. And I'm gonna enter the name of Ellen Ford, who is a past, I mean Evelyn, what else? Evelyn Ford, yes. Uh, who was a past educator in our public schools. She has henceforth retired, so I'm submitting her name. I am not submitting Jane Allen. So, in saying that, I'll make a motion to appoint Evelyn Ford for the courthouse district to serve on the library board. Thank you. Any questions? We'll have a, we'll, we'll, we don't need a roll call vote. Uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we'll pick up on, on Rec Island next month.
But Piney Mountain?
Piney Mountain. That's yours. Oh, I had this, Raven Jones, you wanna, are you, you have somebody? Or you wanna?
Patricia Humbles?
Uh-huh.
I would, um, support.
Okay. That's, that's in form of a motion?
Yes.
Is that second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, planning commission appointment. Mrs. Gina Campbell Peru recently resigned from the plan, planning commission. Mrs. Peru was appointed February of twenty twenty-one for a four-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. In past years, the board has attempted to appoint members from each different community based on the supervisor district. Although members may be appointed from the county at large, Mrs. Peru's appointment historically has been a person from the Fallen River District area of the county. I might wanna add, I really support somebody from that district. Like I say, it's not a, a dying issue. It's not a cast in concrete, but I think it's the right thing to do. So that would be Mr. Henkel.
Well, Mr. Chairman, this kinda took me by surprise and I, I haven't had a chance to, uh, do any recruiting, so.
Okay, we'll move that to next month, table it for then.
Yeah. And, and staff thought maybe you wanna table it, but to give you heads up that we just received it Friday afternoon, so.
Okay. Next is consent agenda. Includes approval of all, all bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations, line item transfers, and fund transfers. Any item on the consent agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the vote on the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered by the board individually in order which they remove from the consent agenda immediately following consideration of the consent agenda. I hope everyone's had the opportunity to review the consent agenda. Any questions on any of the items presented?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Motion duly made, is that second? Discussion? We'll have a roll call vote, Mr. Hips? Mr. Jones? Mr. Henkel?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also thought that. Mr. Latchey?
Uh, no report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Adams?
Yes, sir, I have a three-page report that may be something that you wanna read in your pleasure time. Um, if you have any questions, let me know, but we do have an update from the school construction consultant, Mr. Gillespie. I've included that. And I'd also like to point out that we rescheduled our animal shelter event, um, due to the pending inclement weather, and that will be held on June the fourth. And we would love for you to come and assist us cooking hot dogs and passing out goodies. Um, there is a note about that under the animal shelter, um, report. And also, I have included the synopsis that was sent to the newspaper concerning the FY twenty-three budget. Just reminding you that we're having a special call meeting Wednesday, May the twenty-fifth at seven PM here in the boardroom for a public hearing, and that's all that's scheduled that evening. I think Mr. Hips may be out of town. That's all for me.
Okay. Reports and informational items we have before us is school financial report, is Robert Lee's older water conservation district board of directors meeting. Any questions on any of those two items? Next, the supervisor concerns. Mr. Hips? Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Henkel?
Well, I was approached by several citizens this week of Mr. Hogan's district about the festival that wasn't supposed to happen, it happened, and I guess I'm concerned, you know, how many more attempts are they gonna bring through? And also, are there gonna be other areas? Because, you know, we had DeWalt Winery that wanted a similar, uh, festival earlier this year and, and, uh, it's just a concern of mine, and we're gonna get more and more requests for these four twenty and marijuana-related festivals. And I know that most of the people I've talked to are not interested in Appomattox being known for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you for relaying that too. Mr. Hogan?
Following on that, uh, you know, Ms. Johnson kind of alluded to it. You know, they can apply for a permit, we can deny it, and they can still have it. What good is applying for the permit? I mean, what teeth do we have? What can we do about it?
If the board instructs, we could file a petition for an injunction to enjoin you in the future. We believe this could be a recurring problem. And probably what I would suggest is the next time there's a hint that one is coming, we file a petition for an injunction and, and get the court to enjoin them having the event.
I mean, whether it's this event or anything else. You know, if the board says, if they have to file a permit and we say, no, we're not giving you a permit for that, and they do it anyway, it kinda defeats the whole purpose of going through the permitting process, unless there's something we can do about it, so.
The attorney may wanna address it. I think it is a misdemeanor, but we have to have proof in order to charge them.
Well, I can, I'm sure that the, uh, citizen that had to sleep on the other end of his house because he couldn't, because of the music was so loud Saturday night, uh, I'm sure he'd be willing to testify.
We could file a zoning violation case if we wanted to, to just deal with it retroactively. Not a lot of penalty involved, but we could do it. I think if we get hint of another one, we need to go ahead and file a petition for an injunction in advance if it's the same folks who have seen.
We would encourage individuals to call nine one one and file a complaint so that the deputies can follow up. And then that way, we do have written documentation that it was a true complaint.
Okay.
Nothing else, Mr. Chairman?
Let's see, I think I got two items. Uh, one is the, uh, personal property taxes mailed out. Of course, you're gonna hear some, uh, feedback on that always. Doesn't make a bit of difference what's going on. The board of supervisors reduced the price from three dollars and thirty-five cents to three dollars on personal property taxes on your vehicles, boats, camp, uh, campus, et cetera. And in doing that, that cost us. And in doing that, that cost this county somewhere in the neighborhood about a million dollars, I'm right there.
It was over a million dollars, yes.
I'll say that again, it cost this county about a million dollars. We done that for the sole purpose, trying to help our citizens out. Now, the reason that all of this came about was, there was a couple of items, and I may need some help here. Number one, the lack of automobile chips. And number two is, uh, what was number two?
It's supply and demand.
All right, it's supply and demand. I've heard a lot of ridicule on this, but I want the people to understand, and I don't, I know nobody here from the news. And all, but we need to put something in the paper to reflect upon that. Exactly, what did our county do for us? Did it do anything at all? Yes, and this is what was done. And I think it needs, it needs to be relayed to the citizens of Appomattox County. And it's, I, I have to say it like this, because it's not something that our commissioner of revenue done, and it's not something that this board of supervisors done. This is throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia by the, what do you call it, NADA book? Just to, just to understand it. Ms. Phelps.
I'd just like to say, on the back of the ticket, there is a paragraph in red explaining that. And also, the treasurer has paid for an article to go in the paper, and it's not going to be in classified. It's supposed to be where it's more visible, explaining the same thing, putting the same paragraph in there. So hopefully, this coming week, there will be something in The Times of Virginia with that same paragraph that's on the back of the tickets.
Thank you so very much.
An article or something would be nice, yeah, but we did decide to take it out of classified and try to put it somewhere different in the paper. So maybe it would be seen and be more visible.
Very good, very good.
And I asked her, could you add NADA into that paragraph? That it's the NADA guides, because I don't think that was included in NADA.
It's just that paragraph that the board had, you know, lowered their tax rate, which you had given me to put on the back of the tickets. So we put that in the paper with our article that the tickets have gone out.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir, Mr. Henkel.
One of my constituents sent me a photo, and I don't remember getting one of these in mind, but it's a, it says COVID-nineteen's impact on the vehicle valuations of twenty twenty-one. And it talks about Appomattox County using a hundred percent NDA. And she, I don't remember getting one of those in my personal property, but she asked the question, county tax increases would like to know more about SUV and pickup? And that's all the thing says with a copy of this insert that came in their tax bill.
It wasn't an insert.
Please.
What it is, the commission of revenue has a, just a list of things, and it describes what, what happened and the different things. And we are handing them out in our office, so if you come in and you say something about it, we hand it to you so that you can see it. The commission of revenue also has it, it's a handout, but it was not an insert in the personal property taxes.
Okay, because the picture I have, her tax bill is underneath it, so I thought it was an insert where the.
Yeah, it's, it's, we did not have an insert in the tax.
Okay.
I'll surrender some of my time to the gentleman here, just raised his hand in regards to this subject.
Yes, sir, Mr. Henkel, I received that, I could have sworn it was an insert.
No, I didn't have to read the inserts.
There was something in my personal property taxes saying that they were going to go up because of the changing of the values of used vehicles going up and up. That's what I remember. And I, I mean, I don't know where it came from, and I don't know.
It's on the, the back of the bill.
Is that what it was?
There is a paragraph on the back of the bill, yes.
All right, well, maybe that's what I recall reading, I'm sorry.
Yeah, on the back of the bill, it has the red about the tax.
But that's not, no, that's what she's passing out.
Well, I am so glad that we brought this up. I really am, yes.
But I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that there needs to be something written up in the paper of what we, what could have happened versus what we done to reduce their hurt.
Yes, sir.
For lack of another word.
Yes.
A lot of localities didn't do anything.
Exactly.
They kept their same tax rate, the full evaluation, you know, a lot of localities are just taking the money.
Exactly.
Well, aren't we the lowest? On the list? Yes. We're the lowest of all these counties.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do an article.
So upon putting a seal on that, upcoming meetings, May twenty-fifth, public hearing on the budget. And June the seventh is the budget work session. Oh, I might want to put, add that May twenty-fifth is at seven o'clock. And Tuesday, June the seventh, is at six o'clock. And then our regular scheduled meeting is June the twenty-first, currently at seven PM.
And June the seventh is just to vote on the budget.
Okay.
Now, you can change that if you'd like. The only thing we have to allow, seven days.
Uh huh.
You know, we have a timeframe.
Well, let me ask you this, I hadn't read yet, hadn't heard, the GA hadn't done nothing yet, has it? No. Uh. And with, let me say it like this, I'm sorry to say, oh, gentlemen, you got a letter here. I hope you got it also on your iPad. Good. Enough to knock your hat, uh, head in the creek. Oh, you got one?
I've seen it.
You've seen it? Okay. And upon saying that, you're not going to believe it, but Mr. Henkel.
Let us ride.